L A O C B dot org. We have a calendar of events and people can just take a look and see what's going on in their neighborhoods and come out and enjoy the fun and make a difference in their neighborhoods.
Anyone can be that angel in L.A. and request help and services through the My L.A. 311 app. Neighborhood events like Donuts and Coffee with the Deputy Chief are closing the gap between the perception of L.A.'s Police Department and the reality. This kind of direct networking can help dispel some myths and build up community trust.
Right now, we're in front of a restaurant called 3030 Mexico, and we're just here to invite the community, right? We want the community to see us in a different light than actually at radio calls or stops. This is a restaurant where a lot of people patron, come and have breakfast, and we're just here to offer any questions and answers that people may want.
When we say "community policing," it's events like Coffee with a Cop. It's us being out in the community, networking with our businesses, networking with folks that live and work in this community, and just sharing dialogue over a cup of coffee.
We're taking this as a great opportunity to engage with the public and close that gap and build that bridge between community member and also police officer and explain to them what it is that we do in regards with immigration. And go ahead and brief them on our policy and at the same time, give them information. We have them in English and in Spanish, these booklets that states with the policy of the Los Angeles Police Department with respect to immigration, and we also have a QR code where that information can be downloaded on the cell phone.
Los trabajadores no quieren venir a trabajar por el miedo que tienen a que los deporten. Ya tenemos varios trabajadores que mejor se fueron. Este, la gente, los clientes, no quieren venir a comer por el miedo que los vayan a agarrar. Es una situación muy triste, muy difícil tanto como dueños de negocio, como seres humanos, como personas hispanas.
L.A. PD's policy when it comes to immigration, so people are clear, we don't participate as civil immigration enforcement. One of the things that we like here is that people are coming in in their own environment. This isn't a radio call, this is an enforcement action, this is just having coffee.
The past couple of months have been a little bit of a strain, but by us doing these events frequently, it gives us the opportunity to go ahead and speak to the community member so they know not to be in fear of the Police Department and let them know that we are here to support them, but at the same time educate them so they understand what the role of law enforcement is with respect to immigration instead of listening to a false narrative that keeps getting passed.
Exiting homelessness is never easy, but a new community is easing the path. Atlas Apartments in South L.A. are new, affordable, and already helping. Council President Marquise Harris-Dawson joined the city's housing authority to celebrate this opening.
We're so excited to be at the grand opening of brand-new, affordable, supportive housing community here in the heart of South L.A.
Three, two, one.
127 units that will welcome individuals that are exiting homelessness, thanks to a partnership between Link Housing, the City of L.A., the Housing Authority, and the county.
It's always nice to get to the finish line and cut the ribbon, but more than that, every time you do one of these buildings, you talk to someone who has a story. And their story usually goes something like, "I thought I might die living in that alley," or "I didn't know if I was ever gonna make it out of living out of my car." Seeing people have hope who've been at their lowest points is absolutely by far the best part of these buildings.
Being homeless, living in a shelter, recovering from making bad decisions and what have you, and this is like a big relief from roughly 2005 to actually right now, I was homeless. I'm so grateful to the whole organization for all that they're doing, you know, I'm just eternally forever be grateful.
The Housing Authority of the City of L.A. provides affordable housing to Angelenos across our city. So 110 vouchers have been committed to this site, and that will allow individuals that are extremely low income to be able to live here. Across the city, we have about 38 projects that will come online in 2025, about 2,000 units, and this is how we will continue to end homelessness in our city.
Well, you know, in Council District Eight, we're very excited. We are confronting the housing crisis head-on. We're building as much and more housing than anywhere else, but we're also trying to do it in a way that makes our neighborhoods even more livable than they are. So traffic and safety improvements, making sure we do things like bring in new grocery stores, and many, many other amenities for the neighborhood that makes this a whole place where we can all, one, first and foremost, live indoors, but secondly, have a good quality of life.
The opportunities are limitless. Any obstacle that's in front of me, I plan to face it head-on.
Delivering hope as well as homes in South L.A. Learning more even before starting school with the Los Angeles Public Library. The library has thought of everything. Their programs are for everyone, and that means all Los Angeles families and children, including preschoolers.
At the Los Angeles Public Library, we have resources for, we like to say, birth through infinity, but in terms of back-to-school specifically, we have a program for pre-kindergarten little ones called Get Ready for Kindergarten. We also have Story Times to help support early literacy across our 72 branch locations as well as at our central library. Each one is different depending on the children's librarian, who's hosting it. Sometimes there's a song.
If you're wearing wreaths, we made these stand-ups.
There's definitely reading of picture books, and usually there's a theme, maybe it's numbers, maybe it's letters, maybe it's colors, to help little ones just get used to talking, reading, singing, playing, all of those early literacy skills that will help them with reading in the future. One of our mottos is the library welcomes everyone. We really encourage all families, all students of any background to come to the library to take advantage of our resources. They are by the city, for the city. Why not? Because it's made for everyone. So we have both in-person and online programming too, depending on how people prefer to access our resources. That's really important to us too, that it's not only in-person, it's not only online. We're always looking to make our resources more available to more people. The best place to go for more information is your local library, but also online. Our website is L A P L dot org, and for littler ones, the website that has the children's resources is L A P L dot O R G slash Kids Path.
There's a new City of L.A. Film Industry Liaison. September is National Preparedness Month, and the city attorney settles short-term rental and party house lawsuits. These stories up next on City Beat.
Mayor Karen Bass has announced her appointment of Steve Kang, president of L.A. City's Board of Public Works, as the liaison to the film and television industry. According to Bass, Kang's deep knowledge of city's infrastructure and permitting will help improve local film processes and experiences for the entertainment industry. Kang is the official who oversees the city's contract with Film L.A., balancing film industry needs with community impact. Kang said filming is vital to the city's economy and city departments must prioritize their success. For more information, visit mayor.lacity.gov/press. September is National Preparedness Month, and L.A. City's Emergency Management Department has advice to follow if you haven't yet made an emergency plan. According to the department, steps include making a family emergency plan, building a kit, preparing for disasters, and teaching youth about preparedness. Sign up for Notify L.A. to get city alerts, or Ready L.A. County for emergency notifications across the greater Los Angeles area. L.A. City Emergency Management Department has disaster and emergency preparedness resources available online. For more information, visit emergency.lacity.gov. L.A. City Attorney Heidi Feldstein-Soto announced her office has settled lawsuits involving violations of the city's short-term rental and party house ordinances. Since late 2020, illegal short-term rentals were facilitated at one complex for over 3,000 nights, resulting in increased nuisance activity and complaints from neighbors. This housing falls under the L.A. Rent Stabilization Ordinance, which bars it from the city's home-sharing ordinance. As part of the settlement, the litigants are to pay civil penalties and are prohibited from violating the home-sharing ordinance at any properties they manage or own. For more information, click the News tab at cityattorney.lacity.gov.
The Department of Cultural Affairs runs arts centers throughout Los Angeles. But wait, there's more. They also support three multidisciplinary artists who connect even more directly with the communities, bringing ideas to life through art.
What is the outreach and engagement for DCA? Community arts has been active for a long time with our art centers all across Los Angeles. Community engagement has been, I would say, augmented by our community engagement outreach team. We have three art instructors. They are amazing, talented, creative, multidisciplinary artists who go out into the community and are providing true, meaningful arts activities with the community. What inspired me to become a teaching artist for DCA was, number one, their mission. I loved DCA's mission as far as giving back to my community. I love the idea of spreading out, going throughout L.A. and going to all the different communities and giving them opportunities, grants, all sorts of amazing things that we offer. It really aligned with my morals as an artist.
When I heard about DCA and I saw the opportunity of them having this outreach team that was going straight to the community, it felt like a perfect place for me to give back and to share what art is to me.
But I like to think that me as a person, I can be an example. You know, I'd rather be an example more than an impact, I suppose. And what I mean by that is like, while I'm working with the community, while I'm teaching, while I'm talking, sharing ideas, exploring ideas through the medium of art, I like to think that maybe somewhere out there, like while I'm working on the field, I'm able to interact with somebody, and that me being an example to them opens up their mind to other possibilities in their lives and in their communities.
As we know, Los Angeles is huge, and a lot of folks do not have that access, and so we really want to make sure that we're bringing that arts access as far-reaching as possible to as many people as possible, regardless of age, background. We're really trying to have people participate in activities that they might not be used to, that might be interesting and engaging for them, getting people to think about the arts in different ways, and just bringing it to as many people as we can.
The library is so much more than a building. It's a community hub. So when the Venice Branch Library is celebrating 30 years, they feature the 30 community members who've helped the Venice Branch become the unique place it is today.
We are here at the Venice Branch Library, and we are celebrating the 30th anniversary of this beautiful branch library, this beautiful building.
This library is such a hub to the community. We wanted to honor a lot of people in the Venice community who've kind of made this place what it is.
We selected 30 of the most influential people for the Venice 30th, and we've had several people from this holster. They are here today to help us celebrate, and it's been a wonderful day of celebration. We have Bea Coleman unveiling of her artwork, which is in the children's section. We're doing swing dancing. We're doing a zine program today.
It brings in an incredibly diverse population, you know, people who really need the services, and then people who like a little extra. The extra is also where the Friends of the Venice Library come in because we fund, I'd say, about 98% of the programs that happen at the library.
This is much more than just a place to go to get your book or to be on the computer for a bit. This is a real community place, and it is an honor to serve it and honor the people who serve the community.
I think what we're really celebrating are the people, the people in this community who have benefited from this library all of these years, the incredible city staff who work for the library department and the L.A. Public Library, who provide outstanding service at this library, and all of the lives that are changed, whether it's a young person who develops a lifelong love of reading by coming to Story Times and craft programs here at this library, whether it's a senior that comes to a book club here, or someone who comes to explore our collections and just make use of this incredible space. To our wonderful Friends of the Library who are signing new members up today and who are providing extra treats for a reception, and it's just a very celebratory day, and it's a reminder of how important libraries are.
From the neighborhood block where it began to a city rooftop, the La Mert Park Jazz Festival is now in its sixth year. While rooted in the black cultural hub of La Mert Park, the festival encompasses the best jazz in the country.
We are at La Mert Park Jazz Festival. It's their sixth annual jazz festival. It started in a neighborhood, and look what it's grown to. We're right here at Baldwin Crunchout Plaza, upstairs on the parking lot. It's been transformed into a festival with folks that are selling hats and rings, earrings, clothes, and we also have all these food vendors. It is really wonderful. Top-notch musicians are playing, and even we have our local drums that are all women that come from La Mert Park Village.
Music, joy, beautiful handcrafted goods, artwork, lots of booths from your city departments, and a sense of community. We are rooted here in La Mert Park, but people are coming from all over the city because the jazz is hot.
One of the nice things about this event is this isn't the idea of the city or the mayor or the Department of Cultural Affairs or the council members. This is the idea of the community. They did the work, they came to us for help. We helped, and here you see what we have. Well, every year it gets bigger and bigger, but what it does is it anchors our community as one of the jazz centers, not just in Southern California, California, but in the country.
This is the black cultural hub of Los Angeles, La Mert Park, and that's what they'll walk away knowing for sure, that black athletes live here.
Shutting down Los Angeles and Main Street in the heart of downtown isn't normally a cause for celebration, but when it comes to a classic car show, El Pueblo got some traffic-stopping models and celebrated the pride of lowrider culture.
We're happy to have the third annual El Pueblo de Los Angeles Car Show here at El Pueblo Historical Monument. We're really lucky to have this for the third year where we shut down Los Angeles and Main Street here in the heart of downtown L.A. to have show cars on display.
For us, it's more like a religion. You know, we like to bring the Chicano style back to Los Angeles and especially Alveda Street. It is an art, and it's very difficult. It takes thousands and thousands of dollars to keep these cars to look original and classic and original look.
The motivation more is just for the young generation, you know, they love coming out here seeing the cars, and one day they're gonna wanna build a car themselves, or we just hand our cars down to our kids. They love it. I loved it growing up as a kid too, watching my dad driving his lowrider.
A mí me gusta porque ellos comenzaron ese proyecto, realizaron sus ideas y lo ven la realidad ya lo podemos ver nosotros, su esfuerzo, su tiempo, su economía, sus gastos, se ven reflejado ahí.
El Pueblo is really special because we always pride ourselves on having our museums free and also most of our programming free as well. So having the third annual car show just shows support to the community and to draw more visitors in to celebrate the history of Los Angeles and lowriding culture.
An L.A. car show wouldn't be complete without going low and slow with the lowriders. L.A. City's Department of Aging is on the ball with a new program in conjunction with the Los Angeles Sparks. The women's basketball team and the department got together to take a senior to the game, and the result? Well, it's a win-win.
Taking seniors to a game is our first initiative, we're working with the Department of Aging. The game is just the first step, but we will be out visiting the seniors at their facility and just giving them an opportunity just to have some fun and to be on the move.
When the seniors found out about it, they were super excited to have a night out and enjoy this WNBA game, so we're really excited.
For the Department of Aging to put on an event like this, it really means a lot to us. They always take us on different events, and now we're here at the crypto.com to see the Sparks, and they're gonna give us a win.
I'm very, very excited. I can't wait for the game to start, so I could be jumping up and down for the Sparks.
Obviously, these are the benefactors, right? Our older adults, they need to know that we're a very active community. We get involved in all sorts of community events, and they love to have a lot of fun. It's not just sitting around playing games and stuff all day. We like to get out and move.
This keeps us active, so we don't wanna be sitting at home, you know, maybe watching TV or whatever. Them providing outside activities for us is great for us because, you know, we don't wanna just be sitting around. These are our golden years, and we would like to keep them golden.
Exactly. And very active.
We are fighting for a playoff spot, so I hope they are ready to cheer loud. I hope they're ready to catch some t-shirts, but we're gonna spotlight them. So the Department of Aging is our community spotlight for tonight. We will put the camera on them in their seats, you know, just catch them having fun. It just shows how the Los Angeles Sparks and the Department of Aging, how we're bringing the community together, no matter the age, you know, everybody can have fun.
In this week's Things to Do, get to Central Avenue for the Jazz Festival, head to San Pedro for its Festival of the Arts, and pull some strings for Puppets in the Park at Holly Hawk House. All this up next on Things to Do.
Thousands of toes will be tapping throughout the day on Saturday, September 20th, celebrating its 30th year with four pavilions and three stages of live music. It's the Central Avenue Jazz Festival. The festival is presented by Council Member Curran Price and pays tribute to jazz greats while also shining a spotlight on emerging artists. Enjoy hot, cool, and swinging jazz sounds with over a dozen performances taking place along Central Avenue from M.L.K. Boulevard to Vernon Avenue. Central Avenue Jazz Festival is on Saturday, September 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. For more details, visit centralavjazzfest.com. On September 20th, Los Angeles choreographers and dancers present the San Pedro Festival of the Arts in the heart of the harbor. Enjoy performances from 19 vibrant dance companies to mark the 19th year of the festival. There'll also be interactive performances and free family fun. Bring a picnic and get set to join in. Try a Bollywood step or a flamenco turn, or simply enjoy the mix of dance performances by local companies. Head to the Upper Green at Peck Park for the San Pedro Festival of the Arts on Saturday, September 20th, beginning at 1:00 p.m. For more details, visit tryarts.p.com. Bring a blanket, sing along, and make art at Puppets in the Park. Puppets in the Park is presented by the Department of Cultural Affairs and the Bob Barker Marionette Theater. On Sunday, September 21st, enjoy two performances of Fiesta. There will also be art activities led by Barnes-Dahl Junior Art Center instructors. Gates open at 9:00 a.m. Each performance will be followed by art activities. It's all happening on the West Lawn outside Holly Hawk House. Head to Barnes-Dahl Park for Puppets in the Park on Sunday, September 21st, with performances at 9:30 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. For more information, visit hollyhawkhouse.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Susan Huckle, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at L A city view dot org. We're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. This Week.
You're arriving at Los Angeles International Airport in beautiful Southern California. One of the first things you will see as you are landing is the ever-iconic LAX theme building. The LAX theme building is a modern icon and recognized worldwide as the space-age landmark of one of the world's youngest and most influential cities. Designed by architectural firm Pierrin and Luckner, the building was completed in 1961 and features an observation deck and the Bob Hope USA. The spider-like appearance of the building is a playful and futuristic design illusion created by topping four steel-reinforced concrete legs with stuck-out. The building received cultural historic status from the city of Los Angeles for its distinguishing characteristics, which are valuable to the study of that period's style and method of construction. It is also an example of mid-century modern Googie architecture. The LAX theme building serves as the symbolic gateway to Los Angeles, and the futuristic design is intended to convey new prosperity and the embrace of technological innovation. It has been and continues to be a constant reminder of Los Angeles' strive to be the city of tomorrow.
Muy bien, buenos días a todos y bienvenidos a la media diaria regularizada de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Hoy es miércoles, el 17 de septiembre del año 2025. El comentario público para esta reunión de esta tarde se tomará en persona en esta sala. Madam Clerk, si comenzamos nuestros procedimientos llamando al rol.
Sí, señor. Bloomingville, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hut, Herado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto, Martinez, Jaroslavski. Trece miembros presentes en el coro, señor presidente.
Muy bien, primer orden de business.
Aprobación en las horas de septiembre 16, 2025.
Miembro de la Cámara McCosker va primero, miembro de Hernandez segundo. ¿Qué sigue?
Resoluciones comendatorias de aprobación.
Miembro de la Cámara Price va primero, miembro de Lee segundo. ¿Podemos pasar por nuestra agenda?
Sí, señor. Item uno es un item noche para una audiencia. Items dos a tres siete son los que han tenido audiencias publicas. Para el item 35, el reporte del comité financiero y presupuestario ha sido enviado y está disponible en línea bajo el file de la Cámara número 20-0263-S3. Items 38 a 49 son los que no han tenido audiencias públicas. 10 votos requeridos para consideración.
Muy bien, sin objeciones, esos temas están ahora ante nosotros. ¿Tienen miembros especiales? Veo a miembro de la Cámara Hernandez en la mesa.
Sí, presidente de la Cámara. Quisiera llamar a los temas 12 y 13 especiales para un voto separado. Y para el tema 15, voy a adoptar el reporte del comité de trabajo público.
Muy bien.
¿Hay un segundo para el movimiento de los miembros de la Cámara?
Miembro de la Cámara Soto Martinez. Muy bien, tengo a miembro McCosker.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Quisiera llamar al tema 35 para un voto especial. Quisiera llamar al tema 46 para comentarios. Y sobre el tema 28, no lo llamaré especial, pero voy a decir que Yolanda Regalado está aquí y es fantástica y sé que pasará a la consentencia.
Muy bien, miembro Nazarian.
Mi colega ya me lo ha dado.
Muy bien, miembro Padilla.
Quisiera llamar a los temas dos y cuatro especiales para comentarios.
Muy bien, dos y cuatro. Miembro Soto Martinez.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Quisiera llamar al tema número 22 para un alegado, por favor. Espero que sea amigable, pero está circulando ahora mismo.
Muy bien, ¿hay otros miembros especiales? Miembro Price, nada, muy bien.
Una última cosa, señor.
Sí, señor.
Lo siento. Solo quería clarificar y asegurarme de que el tema número uno ha sido continuado a la semana de octubre 21.
Sí, señor.
Muy bien, sin objeciones.
Gracias.
Muy bien, madame Clerk, ¿qué sigue?
Solo una pregunta rápida. Miembro Soto Martinez, 22 es el alegado, ¿cierto?
Eso es correcto, madame Clerk.
Okay. Señor presidente, la Cámara... Señor presidente, perdón. La Cámara puede ahora votar en los temas dos a 11, 14 a 21, 23 a 34, 36 y 37, señor. Lo siento. Déjame empezar de nuevo, señor.
Sí.
La Cámara puede ahora votar en los temas tres, cinco a 11, 14 a 21, 23 a 34, 36 y 37, señor.
Muy bien, esos temas están ahora ante nosotros. Abra el rol, cierre el rol, tabule el voto.
Trece ayes.
Muy bien, ¿qué sigue?
Señor...
Felicitaciones a nuestro nuevo comisionado.
Si la Cámara puede ahora ir a los comentarios públicos, señor.
Muy bien. Muy bien, estamos programados para escuchar 35 más tarde en la reunión, pero quería preguntar a nuestra proporción presupuestaria. Hablamos del tema 35 en el comité y donde está el comité preparado con la recomendación.
Gracias, presidente de la Cámara. Así que el comité presupuestario y financiero consideró, amendó y aprobó el tema 35 en el comité la noche de septiembre 17. Llegamos con lo que pensábamos era una solución razonable. Recomendamos que aprobemos estos temas, pero también sé que hay muchos preguntas sobre esto, así que si es el voluntad de los organismos ir a la sesión cerrada, eso podría tener sentido también.
Muy bien, si podemos hacer un check de temperatura, miembro Ramon.
Debido a que la reunión acabó ayer, me gustaría una oportunidad de revisar la recomendación del comité presupuestario, así que si pudieran mantener esto hasta después de los comentarios públicos.
Lo conseguimos. Okay, muy bien, muy bien, muchas gracias a todos. Señor juez de la ciudad, madame Clerk, si puede prepararnos para los comentarios públicos. Vamos a ir a los comentarios públicos hasta las 11 de la noche o hasta que todos los oradores se exhausten, cualquiera que venga primero, así que por favor sepa cuidar, llegue al micrófono tan pronto como puedas y cuando te adviertan de excusa, por favor, deja de ir rapidamente.
Gracias. Para las personas proporcionando comentarios públicos, cuando sea su turno de hablar, por favor state cuál de los temas de agenda quieres hablar. Tendrás un minuto por tema, hasta tres minutos en total para los temas abiertos a comentarios públicos. Cuando hablen sobre los temas de agenda, deben estar en el tema. Nuestro objetivo es conseguir a los más menores como podemos. Si no están en el tema o si no podemos decir si están en el tema, obtendrán un breve advertido de mí o del presidente de la Cámara. En ese momento, necesitas llegar inmediatamente y claramente en el tema. Si no lo haces o si vuelves a salir del tema, desperdiciarás el resto de tu tiempo de discusión y nos vamos a pasar al siguiente orador. Los temas abiertos a comentarios públicos en la agenda son los temas 38 a 49. Así que nuevamente, los temas abiertos a comentarios públicos en la agenda son los temas 38 a 49. El tema número uno ha sido continuado y no está abierto a comentarios públicos. Los ciudadanos pueden hablar también por hasta un minuto para comentarios generales. Durante el comentario general, los ciudadanos pueden hablar a cualquier de los temas o cualquier otra jurisdicción de la cuestión de la ciudad. Una más anuncio, si puedo hacer que los interpreters hagan esto a la luz del cuarto, por favor. Si requieren un interprete de idioma español, por favor asegúrense de pausar cada frase para que los interpreters puedan interpretar. No se preocupen, vamos a pausar su tiempo mientras los interpreters están interpretando, así que obtendrán la misma cantidad de tiempo que todos los demás. Gracias.
Empecaré llamando los siguientes nombres, Saman Heller, Michael y Michael Ackerman.
Buenos días, orador. ¿A cuáles temas les gustaría hablar?
Comentarios generales. Digo casi lo mismo en todas las reuniones, así que a cualquiera que esté escuchando, si lo que digo tiene sentido, por favor repita. Si no tiene sentido, por favor dime lo que crees que me he equivocado. La policía no está haciendo... to you, please tell me what you think I got wrong. The police are not doing their jobs here and elsewhere. They are refusing to make required records, and they are refusing to do serious investigations. I believe that only the highest level of oversight can solve the problem, so I'd like each of the council members to individually write letters to the governor and ask him to send a handful of investigators from the National Guard to look into police misconduct. If you are unwilling to take this no-cost action, please explain why you think we aren't entitled to this highest level of oversight. Thank you.
Council President, all the names have been called for a public comment.
All right, that concludes public comment for this morning's meetings. Madam Clerk, what items are before us?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items, hold on, two and three, called special by Councilmember Padilla for comments?
Councilmember Padilla, two and four, not two and three, I think.
Correct. Thank you. No problem. Good morning, colleagues. Today I rise for your support on these two motions that will lead to the creation of long overdue resources in the sixth district. One of them is for the Subpoleta Basin. It's a 2,000-acre green gem, a vital recreation and environmental resource that is not just for the San Fernando Valley, but for all of Los Angeles. It's a multi-generational space that offers incredible variety of activities and attractions, from the swans at Baboa Park and the Japanese gardens to the wildfire, wildlife reserve feels like a wildfire location, reserve sometimes, even archery, and so many more things to enjoy there. But yet, there's very little information about this out there for the public. So what this motion does is it gives city departments the direction to create a dedicated website modeled after Griffith Parks that will serve as a centralized information hub where residents and visitors can access live updates, explore activities, and plan their visits. With the Olympics around the corner, Los Angeles will soon be on the world stage. With major events coming, we need to make sure the world and our residents can access all of these ecological treasures and recreational opportunities. So I ask for your support to bring equity, vision, and opportunity to one of the city's greatest assets. In addition, I wanted to say a little bit about item four, because it's important to me that we restore and deliver two vital resources in my district, splash pads at Panorama Recreation Park and the soon-to-be-built-out Allegheny Park. Valley summers are hotter than ever, and across Southern California, the impact of rising heat is becoming more severe. Therefore, public cooling spaces are not a luxury, they are a necessity. These splash pads provide local and accessible recreation for our children and families, yet this past summer, families were left without them, and many people inquiring. At Panorama Rec Center, the splash pad has been out of service since 2019. Although it was briefly reactivated, it broke down again after two days. And at Allegheny Park, a new splash pad has been planned, and permits are already in place, yet construction has stalled due to preventable delays. We must make sure that both existing and future amenities are fully functional and reliable, and that we're working with the community to make sure that they stay taken care of as well. Our families deserve access to these resources, and it is up to us to ensure that by next summer, these facilities are up and running. So this motion calls for clear timelines, cost estimates, and a report back so we can finally move these projects forward. Colleagues, again, this is about equity, access, and protecting the health of our families during extreme heat. I respectfully urge your yes vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Padilla. Okay, Madam Clerk, what items are available to vote on?
Council can now vote on items two, four, as well as thirty-eight through forty-five, and forty-seven through forty-nine, sir.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
Next would be items twelve and thirteen, and that was called special by Councilmember Hernandez for a separate vote.
All right, let's open the roll on items twelve and thirteen, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, two noes.
All right, what's next?
Can someone turn on Councilmember Giraro's mic, please?
Yes, I work here as well, thank you. Excuse me, Council President, I'd like to be recorded as a no vote on this.
Doesn't change the outcome, there shouldn't be an issue with that.
And that is for the record, items twelve and thirteen.
Yes.
The vote is now ten to three. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Madam.
All right, what's next?
Next, sir, is item forty-six, and that was called special by Councilmember McCosker for comments.
Councilmember McCosker.
Thank you very much. Item forty-six is an amendment to an existing file, something that we, in the original motion, we put in a little over a year and a half ago. A year and a half ago, we had asked for an analysis of the various places that code enforcement is contained within our municipal code, and our administrative code, and our policies of our departments. And we find ourselves then arguing, again, a year and a half ago, that there are different processes for how we address nuisance properties, and we seem to be reinventing the wheel every single time. And it's a great frustration, because it is a disservice to the public. It's also a misuse of our resources to reinvent the wheel every single time. And a year and a half ago, we had asked for that analysis, whether it's in CNAP, or in ACE, or in the Public Works provisions of the code, or the various other places it exists. As recently as yesterday, I did yet another one-off motion about a nuisance property, and I just think it is unsustainable. I'm going to thank Councilmember Yaroslavsky and I for together saying, get this file back to us in seven days. Eighteen months is long enough to wait. Get this file back to us in seven days. I'm just asking, it's typically in a motion, if you say get back to us in seven days, it's kind of unfair, because nothing moves in seven days, but we're talking about eighteen months in seven days. Get the file back to us, because we owe our constituents a clear response every time we have code enforcement matters that affect entire neighborhoods. And we also owe it to our family, our city family, to have efficient processes, so we're not, again, reinventing the wheel every single time we do this. So I'm just urging an aye vote, members. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Ramon?
Just wanted to rise in support of this motion and to thank both of you, Councilmembers Yaroslavsky and McCosker, for moving this forward and for the urgency behind it. This is an issue that we face in our district all the time, and it sometimes leads to national headlines that are embarrassing for the city. Beyond being a huge public safety risk for the neighbors who are around it, it is a solvable problem, and rather than having staff work on each facility on a one-off basis, taking huge amounts of time, I think there is a citywide solution, but we have to craft it, and then we have to pass it, and we have to get departments to implement it. And it is high time that we do this. So thank you both for your attention to this. It's a major issue, and I was glad to see your motion eighteen months ago, and I was glad to see your motion a couple days ago.
Yes, thank you to everybody that's been a part of it. Our nuisance abatement process is among the most confusing and contradictory processes we have in the city. So let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
Mr. President, we're still, council is still waiting on the amendment for item twenty-two, so the only thing left is item thirty-five, and that's the, called special by Mr. McCosker for a separate vote.
All right. Okay, all right, all right, so let's open the roll. This is special for, call special for Mr. McCosker. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. All right, what's next?
That would be item twenty-two, and that is, council is still waiting for the amendment.
All right, do we have announcements, members? All right, I'm, Madam Clerk, I'm looking at Amendment 22A by Councilmember Hugo Soto Martinez, seconded by Councilmember, I mean, co-presented by Soto Martinez and Ramon, seconded by Councilmember Yaroslavsky. Is this it? This is the one? Yeah. Apparently, I'm the problem. I haven't signed it. All right, my apologies.
Mr. President, item twenty-two, the amendment has now been circulated and is before council announcer.
All right, Mr. Soto Martinez?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just, my apologies for, we tried to get in as soon as possible. We didn't have a lot of public comment to give us more time. So I just want to say that, you know, I appreciate Councilmembers Hutt's, you know, intent on this, on trying to look at how bike lanes and emergency vehicles are able to move and traverse throughout the city. And I know this is just a report, and I want to add a little bit more to that report, because I think what the original motion intends to do is to look at widening or making it more accessible for vehicles to go, to access the bike lanes that we use. Now, as someone who bikes, and part of the purpose of having that sort of demarcation between cars and bikes is so that there is no competition, and people can feel safe. However, I do know that there are models where bike lanes are bigger, you know, if, you know, different cities have bigger bike lanes, and so what I'm trying to get to by adding this amendment is looking at other different datas and reports, looking at other municipalities and see how they do that. And so I want to sort of broaden the scope of this report, without sacrificing the safety of, you know, folks that take bikes and move around, how it impacts Measure HLA, you know, Project Mobility 2035 and things like that. So I hope Councilwoman is okay with it, but that's sort of the intent that I'm trying to get at.
Got it. Councilmember Ramon?
Yeah, just wanted to echo those questions, and I do just want to say that I think the the original motion and its concern with the movement of safety vehicles around the city is really important. We have to make sure that our first responders are able to get where they need to go on time. I also do want to ensure, though, that we're making decisions about changes in lane width based on evidence about whether bike lanes slow down first responders. And we just are not looking at that evidence as, before we are making these changes. And so that is really what this amendment is doing. We just want to make sure that as we are moving forward with decision-making about the width of bike lanes, that we're also looking at whether changing these widths will actually impact travel times of first responders. We have evidence from a number of cities across America, as well as our own, to look at those impacts, and we have to consider them. And I also just want to underscore, HLA was a citizen-approved measure. We are mandated to follow it, and the combination of having HLA plus this regulation may lead to unintended consequences that significantly slow down traffic, not just for first responders, but for all kinds of vehicles. And we just have not considered that before we move forward. So I want to make sure those two things are considered, and that's what this amendment is doing, is just making sure we're looking at the evidence base for travel times for first responders, as well as making sure that we're considering how this would play in parallel to HLA, which is a mandate that we have to follow. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote. All right, what's next?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and referred?
Desk is clear, sir.
All right, announcements, members? Any announcements, a second round of announcements? All right, seeing no announcements, I'll ask everybody in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions. Ask if there are any adjourning motions to my left. Are we, are we good to go, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, just to clarify, for item thirty-five, what council approved is the Budget and Finance Committee report, and that was, that was submitted and posted online on council file 20-0263-S3. So that's just to clarify, sir.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Adjourning motions to my left, all right, I see none. Adjourning motions to my right. All right, no adjourning motions today, we're adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.
Los Angeles, beautiful board members here. Here we go, Suzanne, thank you so much. We have Jill, who I think is out there, and Michael Kuhblock. We, in case, oh, there you are, there you are. Also, we have many members, if the board members can stand up so we can give you a quick shout-out and a quick applause. Are we, in case you didn't know, or if you're interested, we have a board of members that help us identify and help us keep us with our main focus, which is cleaning and beautifying our city. So Jill and many of other folks here have been part of our board for a very long time, and we're very happy to have you here as well. Okay, so with that said, I am going to move us along now, because I think everybody just wants to go hear all the fun stuff. Please stay tuned for our panels that are going to happen in this room. We're going to have panels today, and today's panel, we're having one that starts after we're all done speaking. It's called the Power of Community. So if you want to hear on ways that you can connect with other members, please stay in this room.